Good morning. We are going to call the morning work session for the Clicktack County Board of County Commissioners to order our first order of business is the election of the chairman and vice chairman for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. Would anybody like to make a nomination for chairman?
Make it nomination.
Mike. Button.
Perfect.
Thank you. I make a motion that we nominate Dan Christopher as chairman for the two thousand and twenty-three year season for the Clicktack County Commissioners.
I will second the motion.
And I would like to make a motion that we nominate Jacob Anderson as the vice chair for two thousand and twenty-three season.
So you want that all in one motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will second that motion or Dan Christopher to be chair and Jacob Anderson to be vice chair for two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. I will hand the gavel to you, sir.
Okay. Um. Don't come by surprise a little bit.
Oh, sure.
See, we can't talk outside of a meeting, otherwise that one would have caught me by surprise. Um. With that, we have some time. I don't see our public works director, acting public works director in here yet. Um, with that, does anybody have anything word pending they wanna talk about until they get here? I uh did ask the public works director about the Dallas Port Water District rate um study when that was going to be done and when the fee increases that the previous board uh talked about instituting at the first of the year. Um, so we did have that discussion to bring him back on track. He may bring that up with us um when he comes in here today or not. Um, it was just a reminder that we wanted a basic uh fee increase uh at the start of the year and then we'll do a final at the end of the year when we get the whole study, read study thing done. And that's how it was when we left the Dallas Port Workshop.
You mean wastewater?
Wastewater.
That's what we said. Okay, you said Dallas Port Water District.
Did I? Oh, sorry, wastewater. I didn't control these.
I thought you said water.
So he's going to be looking at that and getting back to us with uh more information. Um. The weekly bills, I'm gonna be meeting with the newest um auditor and um advising them to get us our weekly bills a little bit earlier, so I have time to read them before I'm supposed to vote on them. Um. What else are we gonna discuss with board?
Uh, we could discuss maybe some priorities for two thousand and twenty-three and what projects we wanna work on? Or through the legislative session?
Well, we can start with that. I think that's gonna be a longer discussion than
ten minutes?
Ten minutes or less.
Okay.
Um, oh, one thing I do hold up. Um, one thing we do need to figure out is um, it's my opinion that we have one department now potentially to code compliance, uh potentially public um or solid waste that could see some, a need for oversight if they don't have a director long term. Um, the way it is now, um, if if code compliance has an issue and they want to bring it up to someone, they don't necessarily have someone to bring it up to because we all three can't uh be involved. So I I think it would behoove us to have um, one, one commissioner that those departments that don't have directors can go to uh to discuss potential things before it comes to the whole board. I think whoever the chairman is that year should be their direct supervisor, I guess, is my point until we or until we still choose that they get an acting um director and we put them back into building.
I always understood is that the board is not in session, the chairman is the board, and so that's how it was.
Right, but I don't know that they know that.
Oh, that's a different question.
So before I was um, I I guess I would say I was asking, looking for consensus of the board of that opinion, and it sounds like there is consensus of the board. You've got all sorts of fun stuff.
That would be just a temporary until.
Until they have a director or if they have a director.
Okay.
Um, that way, if they have a concern, they can, they have somebody they can bring it up to and then the acting, the chairman would then say, okay, we need to take this to the whole board uh for consensus on an issue or um this is very small. Here's how to handle it, handle it. Uh, it gives them somebody to bounce ideas off of without necessarily bringing it in here to the whole board. All right, if we're ready, we'll get started a few minutes early with acting interim public works director Jeff Hunter for a public works department update.
Okay, we have uh three things on your consent agenda.
Are those mics on, sir? Sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, I guess I had it up so I didn't get my own echo back, but uh we had three things on your consent agenda. Uh, two of them are housekeeping things we do every year, which is uh signing authorization. One is for wash dot and fiscal reports and vouchers, and the other one is for um investing money. Um, savings for years hasn't been that good, so we really haven't invested a lot that it is going back up, so we'll probably look a little bit more doing that. And the other one is a consultant agreement with SWCA, which is to provide on-call archaeological services. This is actually our second on-call archaeological contractor. We have not worked with these guys, so we've kept our, the one we have on staff are on contract just in case. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Seth to talk about construction and design.
Construction, everything's kind of uh shut down for the winter, waiting for the weather to break so we can get back on Courtney Road and waiting for a solution for Roosevelt Grade Road paving. On the road design end, the newest thing we've got is uh the annual striping program project is ready for advertisement. We plan on sending that your guys' way next week for approval to go out to add. Now that we've got our budget in place for the year, we get that out as soon as possible so we can get in the queue for all the strippers out there. In this print shed.
Okay, maintenance crews are still on the east end responding to winter weather. On the west end, we're still cleaning up. Um, I gave you a picture and I've sent you, sent you guys the text. Um, this is Mount Adams Highway um with the water on it, and after we cleared the water, this is what was left of the highway. Of us left of the road, we put gravel on it, as you can see, compacted it and in the, when we can get asphalt later on in the year, we will pave it back. But for now, it will be a gravel road.
Did the erosion actually wipe out the asphalt or did it get under the asphalt or I mean?
It actually got under, pushed it out and shipped it. We could actually watch it, uh current take it away.
Interesting.
Um, and that's why we ended up closing the road.
Is that that Trow Road, is that where that's at? That culvert at Trow Road on the corner? Is that the correct road I'm thinking of?
No, this is Mount Adam, Mount Adam's Highway. We've had troubles at Troll Road in the Trow, yes, in the past. Um, we actually went in this year and we put bigger cul, or last year, put in bigger culverts.
Okay.
And it held up pretty good. We like to say that it might have been just the water to get there because it couldn't get past here, but uh, but yes.
Did it do any damage up at Latagus or um on where it goes underneath stack either?
No, it was close. Actually, at Latagus, we had a, we had to have a backhoe there to pull the uh the debris out, mainly chunks of ice, so it didn't
Okay.
take the bridge or at least dislodge the bridge. So yes, we did that. We also had them in town. We actually hired a contractor to come in town, sit right in town to prevent water from backing up because it was right at level with the bridge. And any debris would have plugged it and then it backs up into the post office. So we did, we did take care of that. Um, so we've weathered that storm. Um, let's see, um, outside of that, we have a transfer case that went out in our six-wheel drive dump truck. It's a thirty thousand dollar part. Um, that's just to buy the part. Our guys will put it in. We get twelve thousand of that back if, when we exchange the part.
The course twelve thousand?
Wow, yes. It's, it's a three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. And it's ten years old. They, we have a twenty-year life, but we'll probably get twenty-five to thirty years on one of those trucks just because they're so expensive.
Is this a new or a remodeled that you're getting? A reman or?
It's a reman. Uh, but we decided not to send it out. Our guys can do it in shop. They have the capacity to do it, and so that will save us some money on not sending it out. But just to kind of let you guys know that you'll see a bill for thirty thousand dollars and they'll give us a credit for twelve thousand when we send them forward. Um, facilities is pretty much the same. Um, except for uh, I wanted to ask if the board had heard any comments from the water, from the tribes on the waterline project? Because yeah, the letter, sometimes they'll coordinate with Commissioner Anderson because he's the one that signed the letter at the time. And we, we, you know, the letter goes to their board, but you haven't heard anything. We're gonna move forward then with the pro, our move forward with our archaeologists actually doing. Now we can move forward with actually doing the survey.
Waterline project fairground?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, Dallas Port Community Center bathrooms will be complete this week. Uh, again, we, I appreciate the help for the community council. Uh, they did their part. They got them painted. And so they will be finished this week. Uh, radio site's the same. Um, and we talked a little bit about this. I just wanted to give the board a heads up. Um, we received a complaint that we plowed somebody in and that we should plow out their driveways. We don't plow driveways out. We plow driveways out, we wouldn't have time to plow roads. Um, we treat everybody the same. Everybody's driveway gets plowed in.
Mine does.
Yes, we don't, we're not.
And I usually give them the thumbs up and smile and wave and I don't know if they, they're thinking I'm sarcastic when I'm doing it or?
You only got one?
So, well, you know, a lot of people know already, most of people know. There is a group, uh Norma, uh been working with seniors and they have a group and we tried to pass that phone number off. This person didn't really want that number. They just said, well, just call the board and somebody will come and plow our driveway. Just give idea of that. Um, the last thing I have on our list is the parking signs for the um, and we have, we brought one for show and tell. And my understanding is we want these six stalls here. Is that correct?
The, the M six on the right?
From this way, is that correct?
So you want them on, starting at the end one over here or starting at the end one by the telephone pole?
Well, I don't either one, whichever way you guys want.
I thought we were one at Pioneer to start.
However you want, it doesn't matter, does it? You tell us where.
My opinion, and I will leave it to the board consensus that we start on the inside and work that way.
Okay, so start that way from the pole and work.
From the pole going this way. And that it was also under my understanding that we would start with one vehicle at the White Salmon Building and the rest of them be here.
So five here and one at White Salmon? Okay.
Is that? Yes, thumbs up.
Do we know where the ones going on White Salmon?
Where the parking spot's gonna be?
Yeah, where, where's the sign gonna be?
Where you set the sign?
So we just pay?
Uh, probably at the back end of the parking lot on that back row.
Okay.
Okay, it's a nice easy spot. You can set a sign up there.
Well.
Then the seniors can all park up close.
I, I would agree with that, but I don't know that parking lot too well and that vehicle's gonna be parked unattended, so I would say also keep in mind that we're the best place that they're not gonna get the catalytic converters cut off.
And I think the buses park back there.
They do. You're correct. Yes, we have that side, that spot for the buses, and they have been parking the cars pretty much
Back there.
Back there, yes.
Very good.
Think that's all for our list and missing something there.
I have um one thing. Oh, I already advised my seatmates that you were working on the Dallas Park Wastewater uh rate stuff. Um, not asking for it to be done by any means, just curious if we've ever thought about it or broached the question. Uh, how often are we going to be cleaning or professionally cleaning or whatever the outside of the windows in this building?
You know, we, that's something we have to talk about. Um, we haven't um actually, I'm having lunch with Gordy and I don't know what is planned. I don't know how we missed it. We kinda picked it around because we actually talked about putting it in our annual um for our janitors, janitorial service, but he doesn't have the ability to clean these windows, so you gotta bring somebody in. So we'll have to get a cost and then we'll get a cost, then we'll bring it forward to you guys and you can decide. You know, how often? How often you'd like the windows cleaned. The inside's pretty straightforward, but the outside is. So we'll, we'll get a cost, we'll get an estimate, get a cost, and then we'll bring that forward to you in a couple, in a week or two.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Has James Dean found a contractor to do the paving at Courtney yet for the spring?
Granite.
Granite is gonna do it.
Yes.
Do we have a timeframe?
I do not yet. I will uh, we'll talk to them again. I know they wanna fix that uh erosion control issue they had. Jeff wants to get up there as soon as, soon as the weather allows, and then they have a few things. If you've driven up there, there's a little bit of a lip when you come off the off uh the upper side that needs to still be cut down. They didn't do that. They're gonna do that before the paving. And then they'll have to sweeten it up a little bit, regrade it, but uh, yeah, we want it done as soon as possible to, so we can be done with it, and so does he. But we'll try to get a time. I know he's gonna say weather depends.
And everything else is holding up? We haven't got found any soft spots or anything?
No, everything else is holding up pretty good.
Um, I actually have one more thing. Uh, mill site asbestos cleanup. I'm sure that's something that's on our radar. When we're, when we do it is a different story, but it's at least on our radar. Um, I spoke with a gentleman up at the uh county leaders conference with historical dot com that they um Benjamin Cassifore, I got an email and whatnot, I got his card. Um, what they do is they're like archaeological, archaeology of insurance companies.
Uh huh.
So you essentially hire them for nothing unless they get you money, and then they dig through a site to find out who the insurance companies were throughout that time and then go after them for the hazardous cleanup of the site. And then if they get you money, obviously they get a percentage of it. So it sounds pretty risk averse to me.
Mm-hmm.
And since that's something we probably should be dealing with, um, I didn't know your opinion of this type of a thing or if that's something you would be interested in looking into or my seatmates would be interested in looking into to try to avoid taxpayer funds being spent on a cleanup.
We can look into it. We've, I did the original cost estimate and brought in a contractor to um evaluate what would have to be done to clean it up. And uh, so I could explain it to them probably. Um, but no, we will look up historical dot com and uh try to get in touch unless you happen to have his contact information.
I do have his contact.
That would be outstanding.
And it's Ben at historical dot com.
Okay. Okay, we will touch base with him.
Okay. Um, and that's all I have on my little cheat sheet here to remind me. Anybody else?
Oh, no, me, I'm good.
Nope. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just looking up her story.
Oh, last question. Uh, parking meters, electric parking meters out here. Remind me again, are they free for anybody to plug in or do they have to actually have a debit card and they pay for their own power?
That's a good question. I don't know. I'll check into that.
Because as I was sitting here, believe it or not, in my office last night at six thirty PM, seven PM, uh, the only one around, a nice fancy car backed into the power station and hooked up, and I'm like, well, that's weird. So it kind of makes me wonder if uh we're buying gas for somebody in the neighborhood or if they're buying their own gas. If they're buying their own gas, I'm fine with it, but uh, yeah, if you could double check that.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey.
All right, next up, department update from code compliance officer George Sendejas.
Thank you. You too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So uh, this month's update's a little short. Uh, due to holidays, vacations, sick days, uh, tried to delay my vehicle brought down on SR fourteen on December thirteenth. So I've been kind of grounded uh in my office. Um, Lee was gracious enough to uh get me a temporary vehicle, so I'm back on the road now. Um, the number of cases is below average with twenty-six open cases, six were closed uh between this update and last. Uh, I received another two complaints, but they're penny and sign that uh site investigations to validate claims. And then uh to follow up on the previous update, uh, I contacted the owner of uh Pothole Road and uh through certified mail, he received my letter, but I have not uh received a response yet. Uh, I did reach out to the treasurer's office regarding Trow Lane. Uh, as of now, I'm holding off uh plans of abatement due to unforeseen circumstances. And then uh the third party, the third property will require paper service as I haven't been able to track down the property owner of Northlake. And then finally, I drove out to Yakima to reach out to the uh property owner of the dangerous structures in Roosevelt. And uh I was able to locate a next of kin. Um, I informed him about the complaint and um I also directed them to treasurer's office um due to the foreclosure status of the properties. And it is from my understanding that uh uh all the back taxes are paid now, so, which was good. I, one reason why I wanted to reach out to property owner was just to at least inform him, give him a chance, at least uh not lose their property, so. Any questions?
Can you tell us more about Trow?
Um. The, this is all hearsay. I haven't been able to confirm it, but uh it does appear like the property owner passed away. So uh it's all hearsay. There might be another person stepping in to buy the property or uh inherit the property, so it's kind of a it's a, it's a mess right now. So the treasurer's office just suggested we kind of see how things go. See how things go and then uh act accordingly.
Good.
No questions about anything code compliance related? It's a good chance to get updates here.
I'm good.
Okay.
Um, I did uh I, I saw the complaints on the mile post ten in uh Clicktack.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that, uh, so the sheriff's office has been trying to get that RV out of there. It is counting on property, but um getting toes around here is pretty hard.
Today, weren't able to locate a bin or the owner or anything. Been stripped.
Is it, is it a stripped abandoned or are they actually living in a hobo camp type thing?
Stripped abandoned and afraid it's becoming, gonna become a camp if it doesn't move.
Yeah.
And it's been there several months.
Been there a while.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah. Wasn't reported stolen. Um.
It's not in that bad a shape, but it looked like maybe it had some damage to the front end, so somebody just dumped it.
And the, the location of it makes it uh not ideal for tow companies.
At least in wet, soggy weather.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this has been way before then, but just the, to get down there. Uh, the sheriff's office did talk about uh maybe public works was gonna assist them in some way to get the trailer out of there, but uh that's hearsay. I don't know, but um I do know that the sheriff's office has been tagging it and uh it's well overdue for a tow. Which brings me into another uh kind of side tangent, but uh have we ever thought about using public works for issues like this where um tow companies won't? I have, I've at least two cases that I know that um it makes, it makes sense why tow companies don't wanna come, especially to Clicktack to pick up a, like a abandoned RV when they're essentially not gonna get their money back. And no one's gonna claim it. It's abandoned. Uh, and it creates a, like, traffic issues and, you know, parking issues. Um, so essentially, uh, after contacting a lot of tow companies, like, no one wants to take on these, these roles, so it did make me wonder if maybe we could use our own resources that just either uh just junk the, the abandoned RVs or if we could at least relocate them.
So it's um, my opinion, uh, anything public works does, um the general fund taxpayer has to pay for.
Hmm.
So all public works is done by road fund. They're limited. The dollars have to be spent on roads, not anything else. So technically, could we use public works? Yes, they would just bill us for it, just like anything else. Um, the tow companies don't want that RV because it's gonna cost them a thousand dollars to get rid of it. Um, and you're never gonna wanna pay a thousand dollar tow bill. So the only way to get rid of those things is literally via excavator ripping it apart and putting it in a contractor box and, and hauling it to the dump or getting it to the dump somehow. If you got it to the dump, you can just roll it right out on the active face and they'll roll over with a bulldozer, but I don't know that you can destroy the vehicle. Um, let's say send public works down there with an excavator to pick this thing apart and put it in a box until we can claim ownership.
Hmm.
Um, so that would be the question. Um, and then it would be, does this county use public works to destroy things and put them in a contractor box or do we hire a local company um to do said thing, and that's something that hopefully is on your radar.
Hmm.
Um, to, I guess I would say work with and get estimates on and bring forth to the board for guidance on how we wanna move forward because it's not only the vehicle there, it's gonna be Hulk vehicles on people's properties, nuisance abatement cleanup type of stuff as well. Um, and so I would say, yeah, contact. There's at least, I know at least one other local company that does it with an excavator. Um, and then check with public works. The negative there is it's union, so is it in their job description and?
Yeah.
Um, do some research and let us know because we need to come. Um, do some research and let us know because we need to come up with a solution.
Yeah, it's becoming far more common, so it's definitely something we need to address.
And that would be the next other thing too, is figure out, number one, couldn't we, how long would we have to pan, you know, file for an abandoned vehicle title before we can? Claim it to access responsibility to be able to destroy it. Do we have to tow it to the fairgrounds? Just so it doesn't turn into a camp down there and then wait four months for the title before we can destroy it and get it out of here. Um, do some research on that kinda stuff and let us know what you come up with.
Okay. Is it, is it abandoned in the right of way or is it just abandoned on county property?
On the very backside of county property.
So it's on property, so it's not in the right of way.
They brought it in away from right of way in a sand pit by the river.
Okay.
Behind bushes.
It's a nice view for whoever moved down there.
But we don't, we don't know ownership or.
Is the removal of that uh, at the sheriff's level now, are they, the ticking time clock that we'll find out when they'll say?
From my understanding, if it's tow, if it's a county property, they have twenty, they can put a twenty-four hour tow on it.
Okay.
From my understanding. And so they would essentially have to move it right away, but when no one cares or no one wants to claim it, it just stays there and. Essentially an empty threats, you know.
Well, it's same deal. If it's in a bad spot that a tow truck can't get to it, whether, whether the sheriff department hires an excavator. Or whether they hire public works to go with an excavator and drag the thing up to the road to where a tow truck can hook up to it. You still gotta be willing to get a tow truck company that's willing to bill us three hundred dollars to tow away. Something's gonna cost them. A thousand dollars to get rid of. So you still have the underlying problem. Uh, but it would be nice to get it out of there before it turns into a camp.
And have you looked for like a third party salvager, somebody that tears apart something like that for the metal and those things and then they clean it all up and take it away?
Uh.
Done. There's, other than the frame.
Very few.
Other than the frame, there's, there's not much. That's, that's why Portland is the way Portland is now. Because people with old there like trailers like mine. Um. Get a estimate of fifteen hundred bucks or something to get rid of it. And it's like, hmm. I can just go offer to that guy for five dollars and he'll take it. Then I can just park it there. And now it's out of my hands and I don't have to pay the fifteen hundred dollars anymore. Um, so I think that's what's happening in Portland. I sold mine for a thousand, so to offend. Uh, but that's, that's where all those trailers are coming from. There is no scrapping them.
Okay.
Um, there's no value. And if you drive down like Sandy Boulevard, you see all the tow company lots. Uh, absolutely full of those things and they won't even pick them up for the city of Portland anymore, just to have nowhere to put them.
There is a local mobile home mover in Lyle, Washington. And I know they have taken single wides bigger to the dump and moved those. I don't know how small they would consider taking on a contract.
Yeah, if it was a nuisance abatement kinda thing where they knew they were gonna get the thousand dollars and not just a three hundred dollar tow bill. Um, I think we can get rid of them. It's just a matter of reaching out. Um, to those and working with some of the nuisance abatement contractor type people. Um, like I said, I know there, one here that destroys trailers in a home way, so project.
Yeah.
And then hopefully we can come up with some answers and, and make some contracts and um, be able to speed up the process on the next one.
That's the goal. Slowly.
Lots of these to do.
Yeah, lots of to do, to do list. I did schedule a workshop on the thirteenth for short term rentals. I'm sure. That's what uh, I don't know who suggested that I had a supervisor, but I'm sure that was one of the reasons. The short term rentals. Um, yeah. Um, I've been, there's been an influx in the amount of short term rental calls that I receive. I would say around like three to five every week. And they're usually, they're not necessarily complaints. They're just verbal complaints. Like my neighbor uh, has an Airbnb and he has, you know, people revolving through the house and they're. Uh.
Are they complaining about traffic on the road, noise of parties? So I just don't like my neighbor, so I wanna complain. I mean, what, what are we?
A little bit of everything, yeah. Designated parking, noise, trash. Traffic, um. But that's why I, on this upcoming workshop, I would like to at least suggest some. So, so at least task me out with some um, minimum requirements for uh, short term rentals. Um, you know, it could be just little stuff like verifying that they have a, a fire, uh, fire suppression, like a fire extinguisher. Uh, fire escape plans. Um, ADA designated parking, the trash to secure, stuff like that, so that I could essentially not. Forbid uh, short term rents from happening, but just regulate them a little bit so that these complaints don't happen as often. And then either uh, having uh, um. Not necessarily me become the noise complaint person, but essentially uh, having contact information for short term rental owners. So that if there is noise complaints or I receive noise complaints or someone else within the county, I can relay that to the property owner and say, hey. You need to take care of this and then hopefully it doesn't, you know, come. Uh, something that happens frequently, so.
When we, when we were working on short term rentals two years ago, which I feel we'll be working on again shortly. Um, we discussed what would qualify as a short term rental and how to get a permit and whatever. But there was also discussion on oversight. Um, and, and I think where it was left, which that was two years ago, it can change tomorrow. Was that there would be a short term rental advisory board per se that had short term rental people that sat on it. So if there was a complaint, they would lodge it with the, their own body. Um, and in order to get your yearly short term rental permit, you have to prove you don't have a bunch of complaints. Uh, but I, I think you're right. I think it needs a workshop and that whole thing needs flushed out and. Um, fixed. In time. Questions?
I have some questions about George's position. Um, I'm from the old school of Skip Grimes and Joyce De Vries. Uh, and code compliance and back in the day, it was abandoned vehicles or trash around houses and. Um, has it expanded to where every department that gets like a code infraction? No matter which department can send it over your way. And then he's not only dealing with the things that are abandoned. But now we're talking about you're gonna have to start looking into code compliance for short term rentals. What's that gonna migrate to next? How full is his plate? Does he have a description of where his code compliance responsibilities are? Um, we could have a really big unintended consequence for him of. I have five hundred complaints to deal with of all these different kinds, so.
And I've, I've thought about that too, which, you know, essentially I, I am willing to take on the responsibility, but not. The problem to me is that we don't even know the number of short term rentals in the county from, just from Airbnb. There's like five hundred. Um, that I checked like last week. And um, the way that the code is written at the moment, it's really. But even the definitions of a short term rental are really all over the place. And uh, right now I'm going off of uh, RCWs uh, for short term rentals. Um. But yeah, there, there's, there's a lot that needs to get worked out. Um, and I think you're right. If I did take on. I don't necessarily wanna be like a full-time uh, short term rental, just a inspector, you know, but uh, I would like um, the capability of doing something if someone complains and saying, hey, you know, these are the issues that I have and at least being able to. Um, talk to uh, the property owners and um, advising them on certain areas and obviously um, from my understanding, I don't, I've never, I did talk to Airbnb on their requirements. And it's. It's a, it's really hard for the, uh, to get them to admit what they require and what they don't. It's like a suggestion, right? It's not a requirement. And that was my issue. It's like, okay, so then who's watching over these, you know, are you, are you doing a home visit when? Um. When you accept a property and that would be what I would like to do is just go out there, make sure that the structures are at least, you know. Operational, there's no clear indications of structural damage or, or huge safety concerns and then essentially just.
We now have a lodging tax advisory board. Uh, I believe they're new. Um, and.
Yes, kinda, go ahead.
You could, in a way, they would be a valuable resource for you because they're the ones that are gonna know. Who is actually a licensed business because they're paying in that lodging tax and their portion goes through revenue and then drops back to us. To be legitimate on VRBO or any of those, you have to have your business license and give them a copy. They have to know that you're cooperating with revenue and then that comes back down to the county. We know if at least they're licensed.
I don't think the logic tax advisory board. Knows who's licensed. They just get the check from the state and distribute the check for tourism funds.
But they'll have access to that because it is coming. They have access, it's public record that you can look at that. Um, I'm just saying it might be a coordinating place for you to start with some kinda oversight board. Since we have a board, maybe they can expand a little bit what they look at.
Have you had a chance to review the draft short term rental ordinance that Lynn Ward put together? On April fifth of twenty twenty-one?
I've known.
Okay, so, I mean, this was a discussion back in April twenty twenty-one. We had hardship, short term rental and the Good Neighbor Guidebook all read going through at the same time. Uh, we were not able to act on creating short term rental ordinance. Um. In terms of, you know, you wanting to just go out and check for smoke detectors or smoke alarms or whatever. Uh, that's usually done, you know, when a house gets permitted um, and through the building department. Um, I think what we need to do in order to have you go out and do that is we need to adopt a short term rental ordinance that specifies. And I'm gonna email it to you right now.
Yeah.
It was a, a, a great draft. She took, I think, Skamania County, the city of White Salmon and created that. That basis of, of understanding and knowledge, you know, to create and, and draw that up. I think if that's something that we wanna put on that priority list for this year, that's something that we should definitely talk about. Um, but I'll email this to you right now.
And I agree that most, most of these homes are most likely permitted, you know. Um, but there is stuff that a normal home doesn't have, you know, like my house doesn't have a fire escape plan, you know, just. Cause I live there, you know, or like a. Um. Just, I don't know, like a.
But does the county want to be the short term rental Nazis? Uh, and give you a nice.
Yeah.
Uniform where you go out and double check to make sure everybody's legal and has their papers. Um, and for me, the answer is no. Um, complaint driven county. Um, I do think we need to, Commissioner Anderson, that same ordinance work is sitting literally on my desk. Um, it kinda got filed away for two years. Now it's back up. I think you will hear us have this discuss, discussion later when we start talking about. Uh, pending what we wanna do. Uh, we will be having workshops, I'm sure, discussing this issue and where we go and working on this ordinance and. Um, and get more guidelines. I think, I think. Your workshop talking about it might end up being kinda put in the cart before the horse. Because we're working on solutions before we fix the problem. But I think we're gonna take what you have for workshop and potentially. Actually start the discussion.
Yeah, and that's, that's essentially my goal. It's like, I've, I've talked individually to every department and every department's like on a different page and. Um, it seems like this is really sore subject for a lot of departments. So I would just like to have them on a room and just, we need to sit down and discuss. Um, even though most of us don't want to, but you know, it's like at least.
Yeah, so let's, let's get it fixed. And that's, that's my intention.
Um. Well, I, if I recall correctly, what stopped us was is there was disconnect between planning and building on. Creating the ordinance at the time, I think planning was under the impression that we would need a comp plan update in order to. Create a short term rental ordinance. I think that, that was, that was, that was one of the major holdups and I don't know if that's still a holdup. Um, I don't know if opinions have changed or not on that.
I think that was a tool. Uh, that was used to postpone any chance. Uh, but it doesn't mean we need a comp plan update. Maybe we need an amendment to the comp plan. So that we can get some work done. Um, I think that was a tool used to put a blockade in front of it because I think the major conflict was. Uh, the differing opinion of what should be classified as a short term rental. Um, should somebody be able to rent a yurt or a tent or whatever in the conflict was there? And in those determinations, and that's what got it kind of. Um, to get some roadblocks put in front of it and tell us we have to do a whole complane before we can do that. Uh, again, there's no reason that you can't, if that's the case, you can't just do an amendment to the complane. So, but again, we'll have that discussion in a workshop and get um. Better information. As we move forward. Anything else?
Hey, you have all three of those now.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Alrighty.
Alright, that's it.
Thank you.
Uh, we got, I know we're kinda in the board pending again. Uh, we got an email from prosecutor Canal. How do we wish to handle the billing for the outside council for the water right transfer? Lee, should that just go through, the billing go through us or should it go through the PAs?
We do it. We have a line item in non.
Or outside councily type stuff?
Right. Uh, I guess the other question would be is do we wanna pay half of the bill upfront or do we wanna reimburse the city for? Have them pay it and then we reimburse them out of that line item. And can we do that?
As long as the invoices for our house.
Okay. What, what's the boards, let the city pay the bill and we'll invoice?
If they're willing to, I mean, that's fine with me. Either way, I mean, as long as they have, we're, we're gonna pay our half. Um, they shouldn't have a problem as long as we have an invoice. I'm fine either way.
What, which water right?
I apologize. That's the, the airport.
Well.
And so we're talking city of the.
And uh, city of the, this is for legal, outside legal counsel for an FAA litigator. Um, to look at the contract and deal with. Something.
Yeah. Just I know the players, I'm okay now.
I apologize. I'll try to be more.
I'm coming in behind you.
No, it, that works. You gotta, you gotta get it, so. Still typing? Want us to go on while you're typing or?
I'm just replying, responding to David.
Um, other thing I have on my board pending list is we need to discuss and address two will be sitting on the financial software steering committee. Um, so for our new seatmate, um, this was the replacement of the Kianta software. Uh, it was the treasurer, public works auditor and uh, Dave Soder. Uh, it was the treasurer, public works auditor and uh Dave Sauter were sitting on there. And they were working with the. Uh, company that's setting up our ask on how we're going to get to new financial software. Um, well, obviously three of those are. Removing, so we'll have a new public works person, a new auditor person, we need a new commissioner person. Uh, we have yet to pick that person. Um, I will mention that I was asked by. Um, at least one member on that board to be that person. Uh, but I'll leave that up to you two on, on who you feel would be the best representative to sit on that board. Uh, they did say that uh, when I asked them whether it should be yearly, like just the chairman every year. They're like, no, it needs to be a minimum of a two year term. For continuity. So that's what I know of it, but we need to come up with an answer on that input.
Who has the most experience with software and development and computers? I mean, that's who I would say you would need to be of, of us. And I don't know what your background is with computers. Either of you.
I'm not your computer person. I would gladly work hard and learn what I need, but I'm not your computer.
Honestly, I think.
And if you've kept up to speed on it.
How I, I, I'll walk. Kind of gingerly on this. I don't know that I can walk gingerly on it. I would, I would say that I am knowledgeable on computers. Uh, I've built websites, I've done coding, it's. Uh, old and updated or old and outdated in my head where I would say that you potentially know more than I do on that. But I don't think that's the reason why the board wants me on that committee. I think it's more of a continuity. And I'll leave it at that. Has, has anybody on that previous board asked you to be the person?
Like the people that are gone or the people that are still there?
There, well, there was four of them. Um, there's only one that's still there.
That's what I mean.
Any of them, have any of them asked you to be the person? Not naming names at all.
And I would agree with all three of us and our background knowledge of computers. I think. Relationships on that board are a very important thing to meld that product. There's some big differences that I've heard between the departments and what they want, but.
Not really, because essentially what you're going to have is this is a, just a steering committee to. Guide the working of kind of which software we're getting and there's going to be an underlying board of the actual users.
Okay.
The, the gens, the auditor staff, the public work staff, the people that really need to know the coding and the, and the all that. And then they're going to report to that board essentially. Um, which then ideally reports to this one. So with that, I think we should probably instead of. Moving forward on this today. We've had a discussion and we'll ponder it. Uh, and readdress it in a week or so, I guess people time to. Think about it and uh go from there. Logical.
Sure. I'm comfortable probably with my decision. You want to entertain a motion or would you rather have that time to think?
Whatever. You're well, more than welcome to make a motion.
I would make a motion that um. Dan Christopher uh sit on the, tell me the name of the board, I've lost it.
Financial software steering committee.
Financial software steering committee as representative for the commissioners.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, there's a motion in a second for me to sit on the financial software steering committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Um, only other thing I have for board pending is we need to do a s- discuss. Uh, airport board appointment. Um, so the reason why. A couple of weeks ago. I pulled that off the agenda is because I've always believed that. When I, when I started. I believe that the person sitting here should have some say in what boards they sit on or what boards they want to sit on. Um, and since that board was a district two board. Um, and we have a new district two commissioner. Um, I wanted the ability to at least allow that commissioner to have some input or in. You know, on number one, do they want that board appointment? Uh, do they not want it? It's, it's kind of sure it's all of our constituents because we serve the whole county. Uh, but you know, if this was a board that was taking place in the city of Goldendale, should commissioner one? Person be sitting on the Golden Dale board? Uh, and I think that's a discussion that, that we should have. Um, and I also think that um. Mel, let's go from there. Do you have any interest in sitting on the airport board?
Uh, before I ran for my position, I knew what boards David Sauter had served on. Um, and I was quite a ways into the campaign thinking that that was one of the boards I would be on before I realized Jacob was on that board. Uh, I do have interest in Dallas board and the people of Dallas board and the airport and the water districts and the sewer districts and. I have somewhat of a background in them. Um. It's my desire to see uh. That be a success and. Also create a good relationship with all the partners. That's. Been some of the discussion that came up during my campaign were um. A lot of fireworks go on down in the Dallas board area and I'll leave it at that.
There's a lot of pieces to Dallas port, there's a lot of pieces to the airport, there's a lot of communication with the city of the Dallas. If you'd like continuity, um, and someone who has experience actually with water rights and serving on water boards. To work through these pros, problems. I'm your guy. If you want somebody who knows more about airplane and, you know. Airports, I'm probably the guy since I'm one with a pilot's license. It's up to my seatmates. I'm more than willing to continue serving. Uh, I think I've added a lot of value during tumultuous time. Uh, but again, that's. And I also see, you know, it's a regional airport. It's not a district two airport. It is our regional airport. If you're asking me to serve on, you know, the, the Golden Dale. City Airport Board or something like that, I could see that being a difference, but considering it's one of our major economic development hubs and. In the gorge, um, I don't see, you know, Dave Sauter used to. Uh, do a lot with the bridge, Hidrider Bridge, um, even though it was in district one, but his district's close to one too, though.
I guess where I'm at, I mean, it sounds like both of you want to sit on the airport board. And there's strong reasons and, and testimony for both of you to be the person that said on the airport board. Uh, one to me is, it's Commissioner Zoller's district. Um, it's her constituents. Um, I mean, yes, they're all of our constituents, but they're, they're her neighbors. Um, but I would also um. Agree that, in my opinion, um, Commissioner Anderson has far more knowledge of what's going on down there. Has former knowledge of airports, uh, has far more knowledge of water rights. Um, and far more knowledge of the current. Potential issues and potential litigation that could pop up from down there. But also for that reason. Um, I also think a new, a new face on the board might extend an olive branch. Uh, in, in hopefully quash or. Um, limit, restrict, restrain. Um. Some of the parties of interest down there to slow the roll and let us actually handle. Um, the, the contract for that airport. So I guess at this, at this point, my, my opinion, uh, doesn't mean it won't change later. My vote would be to, to sit Miss Silver on that.
Do we want to see what the water district has to say this afternoon?
We can. I'm, I'm not in a hurry to make any decisions. Um, on the spur of the moment, I don't even mind. You want to wait a week? We can rediscover it next week. I was just. Wanted to throw out where I was at on that. So with that, I don't hear a motion, so we will just move on to the next thing. Um, that's all I had under board pending. Other than everything else is new business. Um, which is kind of like you were saying, do we want to set up our priorities? I was going to do that under new business, but if you want to start it now, we can start it now.
Uh, we also have the swatch board that nobody's been appointed to.
Nobody's ever been appointed to?
No, not this, we haven't appointed this girl. Um, I got an email. From her, I'm asking if I was going to serve on it and I said, we haven't set up our appointments for twenty twenty two yet or twenty twenty three, so. If I can get. The acronym spelled right to see your email.
So is this one that Dave sat on or nobody sat on?
Um, I sat on it last year and there was. Two meetings that I was able to attend.
And which board is it?
Swatch, the southwest, I'm trying to.
Aging and disability.
Okay.
Kind of a, is that a different one?
But your health, uh, public health director also attends those meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can gather some information about for the discussion.
Sure. I'm just trying to find the email.
Are you, um, are you asking for like horse trading to trade this board for that board with somebody or?
I'd be, I'd be happy not serving on it.
Okay, and that's kind of what I'm saying, so. We need to make sure the board appointments even out. Um, they haven't always evened out in the past.
Well, I think evening out, some boards take far, far more time.
Time consuming than others, yeah.
I mean, you're going to be on. Lead steering, which is.
An interest.
Which just can, can be ridiculously time consuming for a short amount of time. Um, you also just took on the uh. Oversight of the financial programs.
Are there any of um? I guess I'm kind of looking at it that if we do go the route of appointing Miss Silver for the airport board, that. Removes one of yours and adds to one of hers, so. Ideally, you would lighten the load by taking one of the other ones that she has. Uh, if you're looking to getting rid of that one over there too, I would say ideally you would need to look at what she has. On her um, list that you might be able to loosen the load.
I think what we need to do is we need to see the list of all of them. All our board appointments in front of us so that we can look at them. Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I'm assuming it isn't hard that. You know, if we've already made a motion a week ago to sit on the board or we're making a motion today for somebody to sit on the board, we could switch it up. With just another resolution kind of thing.
Okay.
Uh, do you want to go over board meeting or um, maybe do that at the next meeting or do you want to do that at the next workshop?
Or.
To go over boards and.
Probably the workshop will be fine.
The other board pending fun stuff. Either one of my seatmates. Nothing on that side.
Uh, not right now. I mean, we still got.
Yeah, we'll have another board pending this afternoon, so, okay. Alright, uh, hearing nothing else before the board, I would uh entertain a motion for recessing for lunch. So moved.
Yes. Uh, yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, having a motion in a second, uh, we will take a vote to recess for lunch until one o'clock. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Waiting for a second.
I'll second that.
Second eye, third eye, motion passes recess for lunch at one o'clock.